Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and members of the City of Sebastian Plan and Zoning Commission. I'll call the meeting to order. And please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Could we have a roll call of those commissioners, please?
Mr. Roth?
Here.
Mr. Simmons?
Here.
Ms. Cottonburg?
Here.
Sorry.
I thought it was Kieselboch.
I'm sorry.
I am here, truly, I am.
Ms. Cottonburg?
I am, thank you.
Mr. Carter?
Present.
Mr. Reyes?
Here.
Mr. McManus?
Here.
Mr. Kieselboch?
Here.
Mr. Huguen?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. In the form of announcements or agenda modifications, first, Mr. Alvarez has been excused from tonight's meeting, and Mr. Simmons will be voting in his place tonight. Other matters we are going to adjust is, under Commissioners Matters, we will add the election of Chairman and Vice Chairman to that part of the agenda, which is Item 10. Does the Commission member, or do the Commission members approve that change in the agenda? Could we have a voice vote on that, I think would be satisfactory. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm not opposed, but I have a question. Might we also, as a courtesy to Mr. Mott, move Item Number 9 forward?
That's the next thing.
Thank you.
Yes. The other adjustment will be to move the site plan, which is shown as Item 9, New Business, will move that up to, prior to Item Number 7. Do any of the, do the commissioners approve of that? Could you signify by voice? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. So we have two changes then to the modifications on the agenda. Next item will be approval of the minutes for the December 15, 2016, regular Commission meeting that were submitted. Do any of the commissioners have any changes, corrections, or adjustments to those? If there are none, we are prepared for a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second for approval. I believe in this case, we can call for a voice vote also. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously for approval of the December 15, 2016 minutes. The next item is also relative to minutes of our meetings. This is for the July 7, 2016, regular Commission meeting minutes. Do any of the commissioners have any changes or adjustments to the minutes of that meeting? Hearing none, is there a motion?
None.
For approval?
A motion to approve July meeting.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approving the minutes as submitted.
Mr. Roth, and Mr. Huguen, I apologize, I'm not sure as an alternate and not voting, I'm not sure if he can second a motion?
Yes.
He can?
Yes.
I apologize.
That's okay.
Okay. Thank you. So we're in compliance. All those in favor, aye?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously for approval of the July 7, 2016 minutes.
And Mr. Roth, with that, and with the wonderful help of Ms. Mann, we are caught up with minutes for all of the catch-up meetings. So from now on, it'll be the meeting before, and thank you, Susan.
That's good. Thank you very much.
It's a pleasure.
This won't be another test of our memory going way back that far.
Yes.
The next item, since we do not have any quasi-traditional or public hearing, will have the new business, the accessory structure review. Could we have the staff introduce that, please?
Let me just read the item.
Okay.
It is an application by William H. Mock for approval of a 996-square-foot detached garage at 550 Hibiscus Avenue, lots 2 and 3, Block 27, Sebastian Highlands, Unit Number
Thank you. Would the staff like to make any comments at this point with their introduction?
Yes, this is a, because of the size, this accessory structure is being brought before the Planning and Zoning Commission based on our requirements of the Section 54-2-7.5. It's a request for, this is going to be a custom-built detached garage, 996 square feet. There is a site plan that was included with your information. He does meet all of the setbacks with regards to the structure of that size. It does have a minimum pitch of 412, which is above the requirement, and because it is over the 750 square feet with the requirement of the shrubs, we have added that, it's added to the plan. We've calculated the number of shrubs requested. We have, the house was built in 1988, which was before the current landscape code for the seven trees on a single lot. So I did do a visual drive-by, and we have listed the existing trees, which, with the palms in the front, and there's existing pine and some palms in the back. There are six existing trees, and we just felt, with the addition of this lot, for him to totally come into compliance with the 12, I think there should be a little bit of the grandfathering in for the house. Mr. Mock has stated verbally to me, and we've added to the plan, that he is going to plant a minimum of two trees in the front of the building, and if he has room for more, he definitely will, to bring him in as close as he can to the compliance of the 12 trees that is required for the double lot. Staff recommends approval of this request.
Thank you, Dory. Could we have Mr. Mock come forward and basically discuss what he is planning to do, please?
Well, I have four cars, three-
For the record, I'm sorry. For the record, we need your name and address.
Okay, William H. Mock, at 550 Hibiscus Avenue, Sebastian, Florida.
Thank you.
Basically, it's to store garden, or yard tools and cars, and my garage, I have three collector cars and my driver car, so I ran out of room over in a two-car garage. It, with my riding mower and all that, I just needed more room.
If you would stay there, well, first of all, you're in agreement then with the staff's recommendation for additional plantings?
Yes.
And you've seen the sketch?
Yes, I'm good with that.
Okay, good. At this point, I'll open it up for questions by the commissioners of Mr. Mock. Can we start at this end, please?
I have no questions.
Questions? Mr. Kieselboch?
A couple of small questions. One is, is going to be air-conditioned space in that thing, in the garage?
Pardon?
You're going to have air-conditioned?
No air-conditioning.
Okay. It's not clear on that elevation, on the floor plan, sketch. The outside the bathroom area, there is a box shown, what is that is?
Outside the bathroom?
Near the garage, near the garage door.
There is a what? I didn't quite get all that.
If you look the floor plan?
Yeah.
Okay. You see the outside the bathroom?
Mm-hmm.
There is a small cross section there, I mean, it's a small block there.
Oh, the 12 by 22 cutout there?
No, it just looks like 3 by 3 and some 2 by 2, what is that thing is?
I believe a sink.
You have a sink inside, you have a sink outside, that's what?
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to make sure, I thought it might be an AC unit.
Yeah, it's a, it's a sink for washing-
Washing sink there.
-parts or whatever.
Okay. The other question is, on your existing house, septic system is on north, I mean, on the front corner of the house, and how are you going to connect to the septic system? You're going to have a new septic system, or are you going to connect to the-
No, they were going to put a, the builder said, was going with a lift station to go into the existing septic tank-
Okay.
-for the house.
All right. And right now, your existing house is connecting to the county water?
County water, yes, and a septic tank.
You still have two well in the backyard?
Yes.
Or those four, sprinkler system?
One was for the house before county water came in, I guess, and the other was sprinklers.
Okay. All right, that's it.
Any questions, none here? Mr. Reyes?
I have no questions.
Mr. McManus, any questions?
No questions.
Any questions?
Pretty fancy garage. No questions.
Yeah, that's where I want to spend most of my time, I guess, so.
And I have a question, it's probably not the brightest question, but the lots are two totally separate lots or are they combined?
They're joined, or, how do you say it?
Unity title.
Unity.
Yes, we have a copy of the recorded unity of title on record.
Okay, so they are treated as one?
Yes.
Okay. That was my only question then. That, by saying that, it answered the other question I was going to ask.
And I, go ahead.
One of the questions brought up made me rethink. I have a question on the pump, the lift station pump. Why is that not shown on our site plan? For the proposed bathroom, and how is being run over to the existing septic system?
I do not have that folder, I usually bring them, I didn't this time. I can certainly go get the building permit, I just-
I just-
With regards to what you have to review it for, put those sheets in, but it may be a sheet that is in the building permit packet, I didn't look for it or put it in with yours, I apologize.
Okay, that's fine, I just, when it came up, and it dawned on me, yes, there is a bathroom there, how are they connecting it, so, thank you very much.
Okay, the only question I have that wasn't asked already, and that is, you mentioned, Mr. Mock, that the new bathroom will be connected to the septic, and has there been any check on that to make sure that the capacity can be handled?
None that I know, I mean, other than what the builder knows, I don't know, I'm not sure what he knows.
You may have to increase the drain field area, so you have to check with the health department before you-
The health department?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm not sure whether he has or he hasn't.
We can, we can make it a condition of approval, that I can check the building permit. I know they're not hooking into the sewer system, so I'm not sure that the lift station has to go through Indian River County Utilities, but I'm sure that the building department, whether it's an electrical, or, you know, there's going to be some information, the health department would be approving, there's got to be something in this permit package regarding that lift station for the bathroom, and it may be there. And so if you would like to add that as a condition of approval to verify that that is all correctly reviewed and permitted through the applicable jurisdiction.
Right, now you mentioned that they're not hooking to the sewer system. Is there sewer in this street?
No, no. So the lift station is just for this bathroom to connect, to get into the septic, to the drain field, yes.
And as far as capacity, I mean, he's not going to be using the house one, he's going to be using the garage one, he's not going to have-
No, and I live alone, yeah, I live alone, so.
Okay, thank you.
This all brings up one more question for me. You mentioned that the auxiliary sink in the garage will be used for washing parts. We wouldn't be washing any parts with any petroleum products, would we?
No, it's just a place to put them to, you know, there'd be a catch basin under that where you can, if there's grease or oil or whatever.
So that sink will not be drained into the septic system then?
No, not at all.
All right, thank you.
Good. I think that's all the questions. Staff have any further comments? I know you gave us an idea on a condition to put on this, just a checkpoint.
No, staff recommends approval with the conditions that the site plan with regards to landscaping that's in your packet is approved, or made a condition of approval, and that staff verifies that the proposed lift station is properly permitted through the building department and jurisdictional agency.
Do we need to include a condition for the acceptance of the landscaping that's shown on this drawing, as well as verification of lift station connections?
I'm sorry, did the-
Do we, do we need to add a condition about accepting the landscaping that's shown on the sketch we have that's in the red pen?
I think you can make it a part of your approval.
Okay.
Technically, you're just reviewing the structure itself, but because the code does require the landscaping, and in essence, you're approving this site plan, that can be made a part of your motion.
Okay, I didn't want to overstep, that's why I asked, okay. So we're in agreement, we're ready for a motion then, if someone is prepared to do I'll make a motion then for approval of the site plan at 550 Hibiscus Avenue, Lot 2 and 3, Block 27, Sebastian Highlands, Unit 1, of the site plan with the condition that the verification is completed on the lift station and properly installed, and the landscaping as noted on the sketch in the packet we have is included. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions on the motion before we vote? Okay, would you please call a roll for a vote?
Mr. Reyes?
Yes.
Mr. Roth?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Mr. Kieselboch?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Cottonburg?
Yes.
Your motion passes.
Great, thank you. You're all set to go.
Appreciate luck with that.
Just follow up with, Dory, then, with regard to the approval on the lift station. Okay, now we're back to our regular agenda, which is, question, this would not be considered a quasi-traditional public hearing, would it?
No, this is under Number 7.
Okay, that's what I thought, that's what I thought. At this point, we're looking at Item 7, which is medical marijuana, and I'd like to open this part of the Planning and Zoning Commission agenda tonight, first with kind of a general agreement on what we as a plan commissioner are discussing and acting upon. We were previously provided background information by Attorney Ginsburg on the U.S. Constitution Amendment 2.
No, Florida.
Pardon?
State of Florida.
State of Florida.
Okay, correction. State of Florida. Is that, let me back up, is that in compliance with the U.S. Amendment, or no?
There's no U.S. Amendment that this would-
There is none, so this is stated state by state?
Correct.
Thank you. Florida Constitutional Amendment 2. Some of that information we were provided, covered, would relate to the City of Sebastian zoning and planning land use codes. I think the biggest challenge we have to us as commissioners tonight is trying to understand the long-term implications on a very new and recently adopted constitutional amendment for the state of Florida, as it relates to a substance that has been legally banned for many years. Medical research has shown the benefits of medical marijuana or cannabis. Statistics do illustrate the benefits to seriously ill patients, and with this in mind, bearing in mind the amendment has been passed, we need to come up with a recommendation to forward to city council, to blend our ideas with the state amendment, and hopefully produce a win-win for seriously ill residents and patients, and restrict the control and use of medical marijuana to protect all residents. I think we need to keep an open mind with regard to providing this medicine, and be alert to properly controls and zoning codes for protection of all residents. That's a challenge. One I think we can accomplish, I'm not so sure that everything we do tonight will mean the end of the subject for us, so probably will be further discussions. To get us off, I'd like to start the discussion by asking Attorney Ginsburg, who's done a lot of research on this, to give us the two options that he's researched and feels that bear the most likely way to do this. So could you review that again for us before we start the discussion?
I'm going to have Dory Bosworth address that. I'll say that a variety of, well, a number of cities have, they've gone every which way on this topic. I presented you with two options relating to our code. There may be more you wish to discuss, we can deal with that. I'm going to let Dory explain what each of the two are.
After our initial discussions with the city attorney, we tried to come up for this initial recommendation or compilation of thoughts for city council, and based on the size of our city, we felt that either a special use, or through a conditional use process, that as these dispensaries are requested to come in, we thought may work best for our city. There certainly are other ideas, if you come up with something that we can do. With regards to special uses, there is a whole section already in our land development code, Article 3, which addresses those, but in a nutshell, a summary is, is it's basically, as applications come in, it would be looked at as a case-by-case basis. Some of the other uses that we've done already in town that we've processed as special uses are the crematory and the car washes. There's no specific black and white codes in our code book with regards to how much parking, or, you know, the use or distances from schools on these special uses, same with the car washes. So we can take it through a special use process, and as each application for a dispensary comes in, whether it's a vacant lot and they want to build a new building, whether it's an existing building and they'd like to, they're only taking one unit, we could approach it that way. The other way is, I know this is how the county has just adopted some of their codes, is through a conditional use permit, which we would then establish what zoning districts you would allow the dispensaries in, and you can, after discussion and consideration, come up with conditional use criteria. It has to be so far from a school, or a church, or different things, I'm just trying to think offhand that you would come up with, but that would be, now that would require some amendments to the land development code, and there would be, it would come back to you with the verbiage that we would add into the code. We'd probably have to come up with a definition for medical dispensary, unless it was something you wanted to add into our medical description. So there's a couple of different ways. There, some of the conditions that some of the other jurisdictions have done, were in your packet, the last page, we included the Cocoa Beach, Daytona Beach, Vero Beach, and Indian River County with their criteria with regards to loitering and hours of operation, zoning processes, and parking. So that was something to consider, too. I thought it was interesting and should be reviewed is the, another sheet that was part of your packet was from the Department of Health, the Office of Compassionate Use, on how the people that visit these dispensaries, how they're, you know, how they're getting that approval to be able to be prescribed the medical marijuana. And I did highlight, I thought it was important that the medical marijuana is not going to be issued from the dispensaries in a smoking, by smoking material. It's going to be other ways of this, so that does, you know, that may contribute to your thought of process on where these could be located, either outside or inside, it's not smoking with those patients. So any questions on those processes, we certainly can help you with, and any of your discussion? Thank you.
I have a comment, well, several. Actually, I think any ordinance would, should incorporate the criteria that the state lays out, because if you followed that criteria, you would sell very little to none of marijuana if all the rules were followed. The second thing is, I think whenever one is opened, they need to come before the board and get permission to open it. I think that they should be restricted to retail operations. I think it'd be a real mistake to let them put shops in, for instance, the warehouse areas, whereas if it's in a retail area, it's going to have to be pretty transparent. And if you incorporate these rules that are shown on this sheet, the criteria, you should have only legitimate traffic and not that much of it.
Okay, let me, let me just clarify for a second. The state has a, there are state laws that back up what you see on this, I take it you're reading from this. And the state has preempted a great deal of the marijuana production, distribution, that kind of thing. What's, but they are allowing localities to deal with it on a local zoning basis, and that's why we're here. I also want to let you know that if an ordinance is going to be considered by the city council, it would be my intent, consistent with our code, to bring it to you, either prior to first reading even, or if we have time, or between first and second reading, as we've done a couple of times when time is short. So if there were to be an ordinance, that I would, that's what I would, I'd make sure you saw it.
If I can add to that, I probably should have gone into a little bit more details on the difference of the special use and the conditional use criteria. If you, if you make the medical, if you make the dispensaries a conditional use, any of site plans, or even just a conditional use permit in an existing building would only come before you, and you would have the final say of the locations and issuing that conditional use permit. If it, if you decide to go the special use permit way, it would always come to you first as a recommendation to city council, and when- And when during your review, you could add conditions of approval based on that specific site, and that would be recommended to city council, and city council then also gets to review it. So with the special use process, there is a double level of review and people adding conditions. Whereas with the conditional use, we would establish what that criteria is, which would be approved both by you and city council, you know, as it to be codified into the code, but it'll be established. And then it comes before you and you have the final say. So on one hand, if somebody comes in and it's a conditional use criteria, staff would be able to give that applicant specific code requirements and say, this is what you have to meet to be able to find a location if you want to come into Sebastian. And that would be all established with a conditional use if we go that route. If we don't change the code and go the special use route, when they come in, we will be able to look and guide them enough with parking, enough to, with previous applications or, but it would be site-specific. So if it is an existing building and it's in a nice area of town, you know, and it already has nice signs or the building is nice, that could be looked at different or depending on your discussion, whether if it is an industrial area or a warehouse. And you get to look at that and site-specific, then you would be able to come up with some conditions, both this commission and also the city council. So one, one of them would just be a one-level review of an application that came in, but you would already have established criteria. The special use process would require, gets two levels of review, and conditions can be added as approval of a site or an application, both at your level and city council.
Thank you for that explanation because that's one of the concerns I had, is it's so new right now that we don't know or can't project, we maybe know, but can't project all of the possible avenues that this could take, that without modifying all the different codes to say that it could be in that, this might be a case where a special use would be better, just my thought. And that's what I was alluding to earlier, it's so new. And to move this forward so that we're not caught without anything, that may be the best avenue because you say there are two choices in that case, or two reviews, I mean, one with the plan commission and one with a council after that. Once we have a project in front of us, just my thought. So I'm, I'm going to be quiet, let some of the other commissioners talk.
Can we add a zoning restriction on that thing with that conditional use?
A zoning restriction?
Restriction, they should be in certain area?
Um.
Industrial area or something?
Well, similar to other conditional uses, you would, you would kind of, we don't want to, we don't want to create a whole new zoning district. That's a lot of different hearings and all, but you could, you can pick and choose what zoning districts you would like it to be in. Adult entertainment is an example in that, do we want that along U.S. One? We have decided, no, we have only allowed adult entertainment in industrial areas. So you can pick and choose your zoning districts to allow this as a conditional use in.
We could also add the distance from the residential area and schools and other thing.
Yes, that's, that's going to be your conditional use criteria. So if you go conditional use, you would choose which zoning districts you would allow the condition use to be in. So you can be specific there, and then you would recommend or come up with criteria that you would like to establish.
Well, most of the districts are mixed with the residential and commercial. So if you put a distance restriction, so they'd be automatically in industrial area?
Maybe yes and no. If you came up with a commercial district and it had to be 1,000 feet from a residential district, clearly that's not going to be allowed on, we're not going to be able to find any sites along 512.
Yeah.
And it may be still, we do have some commercial areas on U.S. One, where Barber Street and Barber Street meets U.S. One where the Publix is. I mean, it may, there may be some properties that are available, but depending on what criteria, yes, it, it might not be any parcels on.
I would think each case is going to have to be treated separately because, I mean, some of these might, treatment centers might want to cultivate and grow. So, I mean, we're going to want to put that out in like an industrial area possibly. I see some of the other cities are, have odor control, which would, I like Vero's code, how their, their draft. But, I mean, a small little shop that may be only distributing the oils and the products, and this is not a smoking product that they're going to be having, this is medicine for the people that are ill that need it. Those little shops may fit in almost anywhere, in my opinion, as long as there's some restrictions on how they operate. No loitering, everything's conducted in the business. I don't know how we, it's almost like buying alcohol. Why can't, why can't? So I think some of the bigger dispensaries, they want to cultivate and do all that, we're going to want to look at that to put them in a, in a commercial or, I'm sorry, industrial area if possible, like the codes for the strip clubs and stuff.
Yeah, we're only dealing with dispensaries here.
Correct, okay. Now, well, I was seeing that this, the treatment centers can cultivate process, process and all that. So it's not the treatment centers?
No.
Okay, just the dispensaries we're discussing?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm not opposed to marijuana, the medical marijuana, but I think the abuses, if it was in a retail location, there would be very few abuses because there's too many people, see how many people go in and out, the police go by several times a day. But you stick it in a warehouse somewhere and you're just asking for a disaster. That's my first point. My second point is, alls we have to put in the code is that the person that opens this restaurant has to buy, compile, go by state regulations such and such, which automatically puts all this in there. The third thing is, this one sheet that we've got here, I would say, I would make a, in the code, that that sheet had to be posted prominently at the location. They do it for a lot of businesses, you know, that, and that's going to do two things. The first thing it's going to do is there are no way in the world that that's going to, whoever's operating is going to be able to sell, say, well, I didn't know anything about that. And those would be my recommendations. Thank you.
I believe the dispensaries, before they even find a place, location, they already have to register with the state. And I'm assuming similarly to Sebastian, once you find a place, you still have to get a business tax receipt from the city of Sebastian. And I think it's just mandatory that you have to post, you would have to post all of that on the wall, similar to the businesses that post our, our business license and, or tax receipt. I'm sure that they're going to have to post their state. So I, we don't want to overstep and put what's going to be regulated by the Department of Health in our regulations, let them regulate their regulations. And, and that way, they're in, you know, they will be in charge of making sure that those dispensaries meet their codes. And we'll have, we're mostly looking for zoning on the locations of these, these dispensaries.
I have some input, I think. I've given a great deal of thought to this and studied it, and I have some relatives who are desperately in need of this kind of medication. And I consider this is, this is medication, this is not anything other than medication. I would prefer from, from a business standpoint and from a management standpoint, that we have, we go the conditional use route. And the reason for that is because it is much easier to, it's much easier for the staff and it's much easier for, to regulate when you have specific criteria that needs to be met. It's easier on us as well because we're not having to deal with the same issue over and over again. And sometimes we have a tendency to make things more difficult than they need to be. If we establish specific criteria that everybody agrees to, then when the folks who want to have the dispensaries come in, we can tell them exactly where it will fit, and it's up to them. Because we don't have to keep reinventing the wheel from a business standpoint, and these will be businesses. I think it's unfair to put a burden on a business that relates to the whim of a board at any given time. The membership of one board may feel that specific things are important while the next one won't, and then we end up with kind of a patchwork of, it worked for that guy, but it doesn't work for that guy. And that's not, that's not really fair to the public, it's not fair to the business people. And I would be opposed to that, although I recognize I only have one vote. About the product itself, this is medicine. If it was up to me alone, it would be available where you purchase medicine, wherever that fits, in Walgreens and CVS, that sort of thing. And the dispensaries would have to follow the same kinds of rules that those businesses already follow. They are highly regulated. And there are a few things that I, I think it's important, as you said, the warehouse situation is not a good situation. It's not safe for the people who are going to pick up their medication. I wouldn't want to go pick up my medication in several places. As, I know that some of the other communities have gotten into the, how the distance from churches and schools, and frankly, that's silly, in my opinion. It's like people picking up prescriptions at Walgreens, many of the things they are picking up are considered evil by others. And I've never known anyone who was corrupted by walking past something evil or being able to see it within 1,000 feet or 500 feet. I don't think that that needs to be any consideration because, again, we are not talking about regulating something that's evil. We are talking about where can you buy your medicine? And, let's see, what else do I have? I think some of the other questions that we might come up with, or they might be regulated elsewhere, would be the hours of, hours of operation. And I think that's, I think that's all I have to, to say about it. That's where I stand. Thank you.
One more thing. I don't think, we're not going to get into anything into the code that you can do this or you can do that. That's all in the state regulations. So if they open up, the only, where the city would be entering into it would be if they found that it wasn't following state regulations. That's why I felt that notice should be posted. So then it's, it tells the public, hey, these are the rules, you shouldn't be here, or whatever, if you don't meet the criteria. And I still think that, I don't, I don't believe in restricting where in a commercial district it can go, but I think it should be in a commercial district.
I have a question. We're not really discussing who can dispense this, are we?
No.
In other words?
No.
If, if Publix Pharmacy or CVS were, will be allowed to dispense this if they choose to?
As I understand it, though, it's not considered, it's a different type of medical use. So if, if Publix or somebody from there became certified enough to sell it, it is a different definition, though. It's a medical marijuana dispensary, it's not a pharmacy. And so I, you know, it's not looked at, we just can't say, because otherwise, we could just consider this a medical use and add it to our definition of medical services. And it's, we already have zoning for medical and how much parking, but I understand that it is a different definition and classification, let's say, classification, that the state is establishing a dispensary. So I don't know how that would work if Publix or Walgreens became certified to dispense that. They may have to.
It's possible, you know how Walgreens sells liquor?
Yes.
They may have to do something similar for this. It's possible. But all that depends on whether or not they want to go through this process. It's, it's a process to become qualified and get a license and keep the certificate and so forth. And whether they'll always have somebody there who does meet their criteria, you know, that kind of thing.
So we, excuse me.
And we don't know if they'll apply or what it would mean for them to apply.
You, you mentioned liquor store like Wal, and I understand that.
But if I can jump in just real quick, what you're referring to is a separate cordoned-off area.
Could be, could be.
Which is how Walgreens is able to sell liquor, and that's how they've done it.
And they've. But, but when the, when the liquor stores come in, when Dixie, the Publix, and remember there was a site plan for Walmart, maybe they're not doing a new structure, but there, two things happen. When they get the building permits in, there's a zoning review, and at that point, I am having to verify that they are the distances from the schools that we have in our codes. We require it to be 450 feet from a church or school. And through that zoning review, I've got to check that they meet that criteria. And also their ATF liquor license, there is a zoning section that they have to bring that application in. And again, we're double checking that they are the distances. So even though it may be in their building, we're still, there is still that layer of review that we're checking to make sure that they are meeting our codes. So if Publix was and did want to become a dispensary, if we had conditional use criteria in there, they would have to come and get that permit, which would be a hearing before you, and they would have to make sure that they met all the criteria that you establish for the conditional use. So it would still be a hearing before you.
Consider this similar to a liquor store, the dispensary. I mean, instead of dispensing whiskey, you're dispensing marijuana. That's conditional use, is it not, the liquor store?
No, it is not.
It's not?
We look at it as retail, but there are some criteria for that retail that it has to, we have in our, not so much the land development code, but the code of ordinances, there's a section for the sale of alcohol, which does have similar, with the bars, there's a whole section on when they can sell the alcohol. But it's not a conditional use.
That answer your questions, okay?
Yes. Thank you.
Any other discussion, further discussion?
I have a comment. I think in all the things that we've been discussing tonight, we're leaving out one important factor, who is the end user? The person who, who, by this law, is very restricted in who can receive a prescription for medical marijuana. One, it has to be a very serious illness. What kind of, you know, what kind of hurdles are we going to be putting in front of them in order for them to have access to the medicine that they have been prescribed by a licensed physician? You know, these are conditions I, I wouldn't want to put on somebody to really be a burden to them as well, while certainly understanding what our responsibility to the community is. But again, the way our laws read is this is a very restrictive access to, to the medical marijuana. You have to jump through hoops in order to get a prescription from a certain doctor that's gone through training to prescribe the, this medicine. So, you know, I, I think we need to make it advantageous to the person who is facing a terminal illness in order to have access to it and, and make it as easy as possible for them.
I would like to throw out another consideration, though, to, to think about. Similarly to the group homes that are allowed through the Department of Health, the Department of DCA and ACHA for the, with under, under six, six beds or less, they are allowed and we, per state code, are not, we cannot have regulations that zone them out. But the Department of Health does require that there, you have to have a minimum distance between them so that you don't get clusters of these group homes. They have to be 1,000 feet from another one. So I don't know if that's a consideration, that would be a conditional use criteria that maybe that you're, or are you okay if there are five or six in a row? And that being said, something to consider, is that the county in Vero Beach have adopted some codes, and they have made them very restrictive. So if we, if, if that is the sense of the board and the commission that we, not, I don't want to say make them easy, but we just set up some conditional criteria, will we end up being the city that has a lot of them because Indian River County and Vero have made them more restrictive, and is that okay? Is it good? We have people coming to town, picking up their medicine, staying for lunch, but will we be the cluster of where the dispensaries would be? And I use in comparison the arcades that you see. The city of Sebastian has those under our definition for adult entertainment. The city of Sebastian has those under our definition for adult entertainment, which makes it very hard to put one in Sebastian, because it's only, they're only allowed in industrial, and the industrial areas do not have that visibility along 512 and US-1 that the arcades want. So we don't have any arcades in the city of Sebastian, even though we allow them, but you see that they're right outside our city limits, because the county does allow them in their zoning districts. And so it may be a reverse in that it is, will we be the location where we have enough dispensaries if, if their business, you know, supports them? So just something, again, to consider, that maybe making a, a distance between them may not create a cluster, or if you are worried about the amount of them in the city.
That being the case, why don't we just adopt the same ordinances that the city of Vero and the county have?
Because you don't want them in industrial. But another, another point, and I...
And they're in industrial.
I, I want, I want to mention something to the commission. I mentioned this to your chairman before the meeting. Dory and I are very concerned about our influencing you with regard to your recommendations. We really want the discussion to be among the commissioners. And we will take your, and, and our, I would rather have our input be more like a secretarial type, to take your thoughts to the city council, and then they'll consider similar issues that you're talking about now. But I really want it to be yours. For example, Ms. Cottonburg says she would like to see it in the conditional use in the code. And before we finish tonight, we'll, there'll be a vote on that. If that's the will of the board, then we'll ask you, are there any specific conditions that you have in mind? And you may have some in mind. Or you may wish to say, that's up to the city council at this point. Let them make the basic decision, whether it should be a conditional use, or a special use, or something else. And then it's going to come back to you, and you can make another recommendation to them when they're considering a specific ordinance, under the, if it becomes a conditional use. So I really feel like this should be your bailiwick.
I think we should go the route for the conditional use and put some distance there. And this way, our 512 corridor will be out, 510 be out, the only thing left is the US-1. So just put the distance from the schools and churches and other park area. I think that's, that's the route we should take.
Then what came to mind is, when Mr. Carter mentioned how they gotta go get their, their cards. Are we going to be dealing with those type of clinics, opening up, pain clinics? Like, like back, I remember in the late eighties, when the Quaaloo clinics were opening up all over the place, and, I mean, there was the clinic, and right next door was the drugstore, where they would go from one door to the other, and there was a line. So I would assume we're going to be dealing with doctors coming into the area to, to prescribe these, these cards, I guess, right?
Yes, but you, that's not up to you. We're now dealing with where should these dispensaries be, and under what conditions should they operate, if you want to put conditions on in your code, as opposed to dealing with it case by case. That's what you're considering tonight. Issuing cards, approving which doctors are going to be, who go through the training, are going to be qualified to, and so forth and so on, but none of that is up to us.
In issuing a license, can a convicted felon get a license, or are they excluded?
I don't think, as I read all the materials, I don't recall seeing anything about that. I could be wrong, but I don't, I don't recall. Maybe if he's got the right weapon?
Any further opinions on how we should structure, what area we should focus on for the, for the code, what we recommend to city council?
I would like to make a motion. If there is no further discussion, I would like to move that we relegate the dispensaries to location by conditional use permit.
Discussion on that, would that pertain to any particular zoning classifications?
I think Ms. Cottonburg's motion just establishes, though, that that's the direction you would like to take, to find that there's a consensus on that. And if the motion passes, then I think that would be the next discussion, then, is to establish your criteria, and what zoning districts you would like, allow them to be in conditional use permits.
I agree with that.
Is that correct? Okay. Motion is second. Any, any other discussion? And let's have a roll call for the motion.
Mr. Roth? Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Ms. Cottonburg?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
No.
No?
No.
Mr. Reyes?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
I'm going to vote no, but because I don't think there's been enough thought going into this whole thing.
Mr. Kesselboch?
Yes.
You have, you have three noes. Four yeses.
But there's eight.
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
So the motion carries. Okay, so as a commission, we're looking at recommending to city council, conditional use, modifying specific zoning categories with language so that the use would be permitted in there. Is that something we need to pursue tonight, making those recommendations along with the conditional use?
It's up to you. You can consider taking the next step, as Ms. Bosworth mentioned, which is, are there particular zoning categories that you're going to restrict the dispensaries applications to? And then, you could quit there, or we could take it the next step, which is, what specific conditions within those categories are you interested in suggesting to city council?
Okay, I, I think we've talked about it enough. Let's, let's move forward and discuss what areas that we would like to limit or give permission to put the dispensaries in. I don't have right here in front of me the, the different categories.
It's, it's up to you, too. I don't know if that we, on a timeline to get this back to city council, at the next meeting, if you remember when we were doing the, the land use zoning review, I can, we can, at the next meeting, I can bring that chart that listed all of the zoning districts, you know, that had the uses on there, or I certainly can run over on them now with the commercial, you know, you have Commercial Limited, Commercial Riverfront, CWR. I certainly have them all here and familiar with them. If, if you can eliminate where you definitely don't want it, and, you know, we can get rid of those zoning districts, and we can go over. Or, like I say, if you would like a little bit more time to see that chart, to see what other uses are, are in those commercial districts, we certainly can set this up for the next meeting and have that, more information.
Okay, let me weigh in a little bit on this.
Unless there's a timeline.
What's the timeline?
There's no timeline, but I intend, as I've mentioned to you, I, I feel like I should provide both you and the city council with timely consideration of this issue. It's so interesting, because, you know, some municipalities have, have passed ordinances that forbid them within their municipality. Others have put a year's moratorium on any consideration of any of this. Others have put, I think, six months moratorium. I mean, all kinds of different things. Others have gone forward, like Vero Beach and, and Indian River County, and they are putting restrictions on. So I don't intend to have an extended timeframe. I want, I really do want, because if, if there's the impetus to actually do something, amend the code, like to have a conditional use section for this in specific zoning categories, then I think we should go ahead and do it earlier rather than later. I don't want anybody claiming they have vested rights. I don't want, you know, none of that kind of thing. I don't want to interfere with our ability to control our own community. So I intend to bring this up at the next city council agenda, and tell them, or I'll make an oral report, or if I have something in writing, but I have to write it tomorrow. But if, if I can write something, or I'll do an oral report on the results of your meeting tonight, what you recommend.
I'm going to throw out a suggestion, see if Bob was okay with this, but it, maybe instead of us working on picking out our zoning districts and criteria tonight, maybe it would be best if we find out that city council agrees with you to do it as a conditional use. And if Bob can, I don't know, as an agenda item or next week, to see if they accept your recommendation, and then send it back to them, too?
I think...
Because what if they do not, what if they don't agree, and they would rather go the special use event?
Okay. See, now you're hearing the kind of discussion that Dory and I have every day, about a million different things. I think you ought to take a five-minute break, and let Dory get her, the material she'd like to show you, about where your zoning districts are and so forth, which ones, what they look like, so that you can take that next step, if you can tonight. If you can agree that it should be in, a conditional use in the XYZ zoning district. Or if you can't agree, I can always do what Dory suggested. But I think, in order to save as much decision-making power for you as possible, this is a good time to look at that. I mean, it's only 7:03.
How do the commissioners feel about that? We had two different opinions expressed. One is, let, let Attorney Ginsburg go forward, make an oral recommendation to council, and see if they agree with our decision. If they do, then we can go forward, or proceed with giving council more direction as far as how we're coming up with this.
I think we should go to the city council, so, for this conditional use, and if they accept that thing, then we take the next step for the zoning.
And I would rather take the five-minute break and review, but I guess maybe that's because I've thought a lot about it, so it's easier for me to decide. I don't know.
I'll tell you what, probably best thing to do is see how the commission feels, take a vote on it, and decide how we go forward.
That's one way to decide.
Yeah, that's right. So, a motion would be to...
I have one question before we vote. If we decide to take the five-minute break and go on with this, and you present it to city council, and they don't like our idea of the conditional use, then we're back to square one again, right?
No, you're not back to square one. You're out of the picture.
Oh, we're out of the picture?
Yeah, because if they decide to go with the special use, there won't be an ordinance.
Yeah. Okay.
There, there's already codes or criteria, there's a process already explained in the code, and that would be the one where we would take it as site, site-specific, case by case basis.
Or special use, then, right?
Correct. So the real issue for you...
Then, then why are we even doing this?
You're doing this because, right now, you're the first body in Sebastian to take a look at this on the merits. The city council has asked you to do that. And so you have already decided you want to see it as a conditional use. You could leave it there, and as Dory suggested, if the city council agrees with you, it would then come back, and you would go forward with more specifics. What do you mean by a conditional use? Conditional in what zoning classifications? And then, within that zoning classification, what other restrictions do you want to put into the code? Some of the examples are given to you in your materials, and there'd be more, too. And you could decide, hours of operation, or one was discussed earlier, distances from each other, or distances from other entities is another, and there are others, too. A total number within the community, that's a possible restriction, and so on. I mean, we could do it that way, or we could take as many of those steps tonight as you wish to take, and then you're giving the city council a little more information as you go.
What about if we were to add one condition to that? I hear there's, at least what I think, to be somewhat of a consensus, consensus on saying that one thing we would want to add to that conditional use would be the 1,000-foot minimum from, that we use for other properties, in other words, away from churches, schools, that sort of thing, that, that would be, the 1,000-foot minimum would be included.
Whatever you decide tonight, I will relay to council next Wednesday.
If, if they agree with you, with your conditions, or they can, they may have a few criteria that they would throw in, the neck, and they agree to go the conditional use, the next step would then be, is the public hearing part. And we would bring it, that's when we're bringing back the code with the strikeout and the underline for the additions to the code. It's still going to come back to you, as, as the formal, when we change the code, the, you know, we change text and zoning districts, and then city council has to have two additional public hearings to incorporate those changes into the code. So it'll come back to you. This wouldn't be the only time, if you, you know, stay and accumulate your, what you want to send to, your recommendation to city council with the additional criteria, it's still going to come back to you, to get it tweaked and into the code the exact way you wanted.
A question, is it lawful to put a restriction on it of, like, say, two locations or three locations, or is that restriction a fair trade?
I've seen provisions in other codes dealing with this that do limit the number.
There's provisions also, how far they can be from each other, in the Vero.
Yes.
So I mean, if you're a thousand feet from each other, you're not going to be able to fit too many in this city.
And, and then, then, of course, you're dealing with the policy discussion that Mr. Carter raised. And also, some of the material, and there's been quite a bit of material developed in the past couple months with this. One of them is, if you have several, then you have, you may have some price, some competitive prices. The more you restrict it, the more ability the dispensary has to control the price, and, you know, it, there's all kinds of consequences, and sometimes unintended consequences from some of these actions. I've seen some of the things being discussed. But now it's up to you, and you're right, if council, and Dory's right, if council agrees with you, that it should be a conditional use as opposed to a special use, there will be further opportunities to look at this, conduct public hearings, both here and at the, and at the city council, to craft an ordinance. And the question is, how far do you want to go tonight, beyond saying you prefer a conditional use to advise the city council?
I think we definitely, under those terms, should go with a conditional use, and then we can discuss any restrictions that we want to put on it after that. Is that correct?
You've already approved a motion that it should be a conditional use, as opposed to a special use. So the conditional use, we're looking at an ordinance amendment... So the conditional use, we're looking at an ordinance amendment that would restrict the location to certain zoning districts, which we haven't yet discussed, and within those districts, set up a number of conditions, which we also haven't discussed yet.
Right.
Can I just paraphrase that?
Pardon?
Can I just paraphrase that? It's, how are you gonna do it? We've already decided that. Where are you going to do it? That's the next decision. How are you gonna do it? That's the last decision. Am I right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like, I'd like to just send it to the, to the council as conditional use.
And see what happens.
Give it some time to-
Yep. Okay.
Think about this, because they may, and many times they have, they have been the opposite of what we've been. Let's, let's see if they like our conditional use. And that'll give us at least another, to our next meeting, or we're not gonna have a special meeting for this, are we?
Oh, no. I'm not planning-
It'll give us to our next meeting to think about what are some of the conditions. I mean, I like some of these, but as I hear more discussion, I might, you know, rethink, rework some of this stuff here.
And since that is the way you've chosen, maybe really examine that last sheet that did have the suggested conditions that have already been adopted by some of the other, for the other cities.
Yeah, I agree. I think we've discussed it and to the point where we're all in agreement, or at least I think so.
All right.
To proceed with that and put this on the agenda for our next meeting, consider the, the different aspects of a, of this use that need to be added to the decision when we make the, the code complete.
That's assuming the council agrees.
So, yeah, yeah, that's, that's true.
I'll certainly send a, whether you watch it or listen on Thursday morning, then after next Wednesday's city council meeting, I'll send out an update to everybody to see what direction they gave us. Because the next week would be, and I would have to get a packet out then within a day or two for that next, for the February meeting. So we'll definitely get a heads up.
And if, if you're gonna be considering it again, that is, if the city council agrees with you on conditional use, then Dory will provide in the background materials for you the material that she would have gone tonight in the five minute, during the five-minute break. So you will have a list of the different zoning categories in the city of Sebastian and specifically what they permit.
Okay, so we don't need a motion on that at this point?
No.
Okay. Then moving forward, the next open item would be public input. And I see we have no residents here, so we'll pass the public input. Next item would be commissioners' matters. And the first item under this would be nomination and then election of the chairman and vice chairman for the remainder of 2017. I'll open the floor for nominations. And we'll, well, let's tackle the chairman first. That would be an obvious one.
I'd like to make a nomination for Louise Kattemberg for chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any other nominations?
Should I correct that and say chairperson?
Better get used to it.
Okay, nominations are closed, so by-
Operation of law.
Sometimes known as default.
The vote would be unanimous.
Now traditionally, what would happen is that Ms. Kattemberg would conduct the, the nomination process and the election process for the vice chair.
That's just what I was gonna ask at this point, so I turn the gavel over.
Yes.
So I turn the-
Okay, the new chair will entertain a motion for vice chair.
This isn't a nomination, but who wants the job? All right.
I'd be happy to continue if that's allowed.
I was, I was gonna suggest that we nominate David Reyes again. And I'll second it, since he nominated himself.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, Mr. Reyes is the chair of vice, oh, I mean the vice chair.
Vice chair.
Congratulations.
Do I continue the meeting now?
Yes.
Okay. City attorney matters, please.
Well, why don't, you can, at this point, you can see if the, any of the members have anything they'd like to-
Do any of the other commissioners have anything they need to address?
I just want to add that it's been a pleasure to serve as vice chair and chairman the last year of this commission. I think we do a heck of a good job for the city and I really appreciate all the support you've given me in the past. Thanks.
Thanks, thank you for your service, Joel.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. City attorney matters, please.
Nothing tonight, thank you very much.
Staff matters, please.
I just wanted to update you on the, I'm sure everyone's seen the clearing on the corner of Jackson Street in US-1, which was the site plan that went before you December 15th. It was conditional on the preliminary plat and the final plat being approved. The preliminary plat is going before city council this coming Wednesday, the 25th. And I believe the meeting after that, the final plat will go before them and get recorded. What we had issued them was a land clearing permit to allow them to begin some of the site work with regards to clearing the landscaping, maybe doing the, the grading for their stormwater ponds and the ditches for their stormwater pipes. But that is all technically that's gonna be going on that site until the building permit has been issued, which will be after the final plat is recorded. So until the subdivision process is finished, there won't be any walls or plumbing or electrical going in on the site. But we have issued the permit for allow them to, at the risk, to, to land clear and begin some of the grading on the site. But that's the approved Dollar Tree and the Medical Kidney Dialysis Center that's going there.
I do have one question. What happened to the buried treasures? You know, we approved the site plan and things like that, but then nothing, they started to work on it and then it just stopped.
Yep, they did clear it too, and that was with an approved site plan. It was some contractor problem, and then I believe there was, I'm not sure if there was financial, but she had, she hung in there for a long time trying to work it out and getting the contractors organized. But she has, she had relocated and I believe she did not renew the application because they're good for a year and then they can be extended for another year. She's, we've never completed, they, she was required to do some parking in lieu and that process wasn't. So that's kind of a, a project that's kind of null and void at this point. Not to say though, that when things, when some of those projects that are approved, subdivisions that are approved and never materialize, a lot of times when those properties go up for sale, they certainly come in and look through our files. And what we usually tell them is if there's, you know, what's been approved can certainly be regenerated. We would have to bring it before you as a site plan, but what has been approved certainly gives them a guiding, a guideline on what has been. And, you know, I'm sure if staff, if they came in and said, we want to build the same thing and have those plans recertified, we certainly would recommend the approval with the conditions that it was approved with and, and sometimes regenerate a project. So it's not to say, but when we do have interest like that.
It's like that clam site that we approved way back when and they did some work and, on that little bitty piece of land there.
Did the public storage get approved by council?
The public store?
Storage.
Oh, I know, that was, because it wasn't in a PUD, the site plan was, you were the final, the quasi judicial hearing is, is the final approval, so that was-
Oh, so that's right. Okay, I'm sorry.
And it probably, there was, there was no appeal, so they are working on getting their contractors together and that project will be coming in shortly for building permits. They're moving with that problem, with that project. And I believe, if you can see too, the advanced auto is under full construction. Auto zone, yes, yes, yes.
It's moving quick. Everybody's just another auto part.
There is no distance requirement for that.
I use them all.
Yeah, we may have to start doing that with the auto zones and I have a-
We'll lot line for those.
We have another Dollar General looking at a site too, so we may need to add that as conditional use criteria.
Are there any items that anybody would like to see on the next agenda?
Depending on the outcome then of, of the city council meeting, there may be the next, the first meeting in February. I'm not sure what that date is. We'll put together a packet and continue on the discussion of the dispensaries. And there may be another accessory structure that would be on that agenda then.
Okay, thank you. That being the completion of the business this evening, we are adjourned.